All right. Good morning, everyone. January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it's our regular meeting. And we're going to go ahead and open it up and call this meeting to order. As customer, we'll start out with the moment of silence, and it looks like we have a couple of moments of silence.
I'll start.
Okay, and then Vice Chair Rasmussen, you can go next. And then I know that Supervisor Owen has one as well.
Okay. I think I think the fires in Los Angeles burning are all on our minds. We have a lot of local crews there. We have local chiefs there. We have significant resources from the LNU. And just I know that they're all in our hearts and minds. I know this is not something that's new to us. We have a lot of experience with this, but the scope and magnitude is something that I personally cannot fathom. I've been in contact with Cal Fire Director Tyler and a lot of the Sacramento staff on this, and it is weighing very heavily on all of them. So I I know you're all thinking about them, and we'll just continue to think about them and dedicate this moment of silence to them, as well as the survivors and everyone else who is just, you know, really in the midst of the the first phase of a disaster, and we we know how long of a haul that's going to be.
Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two this morning. The first one is Gabriel Ramirez. Gabriel passed away this past November at the age of thirty-eight. He was a two thousand and four graduate of Kelseyville High School, who, four months after graduation, entered the United States Army, knowing he would be serving his country during the global war on terrorism. He served two consecutive tours totaling twenty-seven months as a combat engineer during Operation Iraqi Freedom, giving his full self to his country and the brothers he served with. Specialist Ramirez performed expertly in many critical roles and duty positions that contributed directly to the overwhelming success of his squad and platoon. As a result, he was awarded the Army Commendation Medal, Army Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Iraqi Iraqi Campaign Medal with a Campaign Star, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Ribbon, Combat Action Badge, Driver and Medic Badge, just to name a few. He was honorably discharged in two thousand and ten. His service to our country, as well as his love, kindness, and willingness to help others in our community will not be forgotten. The second one is Georgette Eggle, who passed away this past Sunday. Georgette was a six-year staff member of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, where she served as both an administrative assistant and member services manager. Georgette quickly became an indispensable part of the chamber team, described as a very spoke in its wheel. In her multifaceted role, she was the voice of the organization, often the first point of contact for phone calls and visitors. She coordinated the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, managed financial transactions, created and distributed the twice-weekly newsletters, supported social media efforts, organized monthly mixers and events, and served as primary contact for chamber members. Her dedication, creativity, and organizational talents touched every aspect of the chamber's work. Georgette dedicated herself to learning as much about our county as she could, going on weekend adventures with her husband to explore every corner of Lake County. Georgette was a member of Hundred Women Strong, another organization which has contributed greatly to our county and its residents. Georgette also volunteered for the Lake County Historical Society and Eli Stage-Stop Museum, and took great pride in her work and the many improvements there. Our county is better because of the many contributions Georgette made, and she will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair. Supervisor Owen?
Yes. Is it on? Okay. I'd like to recognize John Matthew Woodard. He was a great member in the Middletown community. He worked locally as well as doing construction. He had worked at Hardesters. That's where I got to know him many years ago. He was born October fifteenth, nineteen fifty-six, and he died this last December, twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. His services will be at the Greenview Restaurant in Kitten Valley on February fifteenth at one o'clock. Thank you.
You have one, Supervisor? All right. With that, we'll conduct the pledge of allegiance. Supervisor Sabatier, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for those moments of silence. Next, we will move on to our consideration of extra items not appearing on posted agenda. Do we have any of at this time?
No, we do not.
Okay. Next, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. These items can be pulled by anyone from the board or anyone from the public. These are usually non-controversial, so they're passed in one motion. And but at times, these need to be discussed more so some folks can pull the items. Is there anyone from the board that'd like to? Supervisor Sabatier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull for further discussion item five point one eight.
Five point one eight. Are there any others? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to pull an item from the agenda? Anyone on Zoom? All right, sir, if you can unmute and let us know which item you'd like to pull on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. My name is Ben Hiddle. I'm waiting for the three minutes of non-agenda.
Okay, well, that will be coming up soon, so we'll look for you then. All right, is there anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five point one eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, let's see, we're at nine oh seven. Perfect. So next, we have timed items, and first is public input. And with this, these are items that are not currently posted on the agenda, but if someone from the community or from the public would like to come up and state something, they if they filled out paperwork, or even if they will fill out paperwork, it'll come up and speak for three minutes. And the supervisors at this time will not be able to address it, but at the same time, we could either direct you to that supervisor or direct it to a director that or or administrator that can help you with that. But nonetheless, we will hear what you have to say for three minutes. Please state your name for.
Hi, Elaine Brown. I have a storage unit in Kelseyville, California. I'm very concerned for Lake County. As all of well, most of you up there know. And I just want to say, I think we have to start our conversation with kindness, forgiveness, love, and most of all, grace. And having been in this community off and on the last years of COVID, and I'll say the COVID word, we need to sit down at a commonality table, which is a beautiful lake and a good meal, and talk about what's really going on in this community. As a newcomer with new eyes, I see long-term unforgiveness between a Native Peoples group and the new group. Our commonality is the lake and the health of that lake. So again, I really think there needs to be a table set beautifully, and we come together and we talk openly and honestly about the science, the true science of what happened these last four years, at a table where we have kindness, forgiveness, love, and grace, which can be summed up in the Golden Rule. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, is there anyone else that would like to? Rob?
On board. Congratulations, Chair. Congratulations Supervisor Owen, Supervisor Rasmussen. My thoughts are with you. I'd like to ask respectfully that we put on the the earliest available agenda, the item that was heard on December tenth this last year, item six point one one regarding the Kelseyville name change. I think it's important that the current board, including the two new board members, be involved in this discussion. I'm not going to get into the conversation of we're not going to have this debate, obviously we can't, regarding the name change right now, but I think it's very important that these two board members be allowed the opportunity to weigh in on it. With all due respect to the last two board members that that they they have succeeded, they're not going to be here to deal with the ramifications and the fallout of this decision regardless of how it comes down. In fact, one of the board members was not even a legitimately elected board member, nor did he care enough to even run for office in as a as a county supervisor. So I think that questions the legitimacy of his involvement to begin with on a issue of this magnitude. So I respectfully ask that it be placed on the earliest available agenda for reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else that has public input? Okay. If you can unmute and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. Rainbow Church. If you are, if you're listed as Rainbow Church, please unmute and state your name for the record. Okay. And we're not being, we don't have the opportunity to hear you, so we'll give you a couple more seconds, but we'll have to move on if we can't have your statement. But what we can do is if you can write an email and send it in, we can also look at it at a future public input date.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can. There you go.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, thank you. My name is Reverend Julia Bona. I'm with the Rainbow Church of Living Light. The reason I wanted to speak to the board today is that there has been an unacceptable situation occurring with the Middletown area town hall, in that the Middletown proper area has lost its guaranteed seat on the board. This this is primarily due to the intervention, and I believe illegal intervention, of Board Chair Monica Rosenthal. There is a petition that has been started on the eighth of January, just prior to the election, that now has numerous signatures, and I represent their voice, and I'd like to read the text of that petition. First of all, the reasons for the petition are that there was a violation of nomination procedures. During the December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four mass meeting, Chair Monica Rosenthal officially closed election nominations, and then just twenty minutes later falsely stated the nominations were still open in order to accept an additional nomination. She then refused to disqualify this nomination when confronted about it. This improper action compromised the integrity of the election process. Secondly, there was a misrepresentation of election procedures. Despite publicly stating when asked at the same December twelfth meeting that the Middletown proper region is mandated to have two seats on this on the math board, as is correct, Rosenthal then made an unauthorized private decision to allocate one of those two vacating Middletown proper seats to the at-large region. This contradicts the Mass Bylaw's key provision to guarantee Middletown proper's two board representatives at all times. Rosenthal's decision was made without public input or broader membership approval, and was then distributed to the Mass audience via email in a Mass two thousand and twenty-five election process overview document as a fatal complete. She overstepped her authority, she by making significant election decisions privately without consulting the Mass membership or adhering to the Mass Bylaw's major provisions guaranteeing the Middletown proper region two board seats. Despite being informed of these serious issues in a formal written complaint prior to the election, Chair Monica Rosenthal failed to take corrective action to address the improper nomination and the misallocation of board seats, resulting in and and persisted in holding an election, which resulted in the Middletown proper area not having its dedicated to individuals on the board. We ask that the immediate correction and redistribution of the election process document to reflect that Middletown proper seats were up for election. We ask for a new election to reflect the fact that there is that there should be two two candidates on the board. We ask for the resignation of Chair Monica Rosenthal for the Mass Board for her improper actions and a permanent ban placed on her future participation on that board. And we ask for the formation of a committee to review and address these issues, ensuring that the Mass Board adheres to its bylaws and the principles of the Brown Act now and in the future.
All right. Thank you. Your time's up. All right. Is there any other folks on Zoom that would like to? Benjamin Hiddle, if you can unmute, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Ben Hiddle. I'm here because I've been listening to the meetings and participating occasionally with the HITCH. I don't know if you remember my public comments on that. And also, automation and robotics need to happen to to our county so that we can give better services. And I came to the board last year asking the board for some help on turning the landfill into a microfactory and some ideas like that, because I teach solar and sustainable construction and robotics, so it's right up my alley. I got in touch with Lars at Special Districts. I got in touch with Jessica. I got in touch with a ton of people. And I'm here again this year, saying it was a very difficult process, and would like to get on the agenda, the earliest at the earliest time, some kind of a feasibility study to take the landfill, turn it into a microfactory by putting solar panels on it around it, capturing the biogas, and sorting the trash with robots. This idea has been done in other places, but not at a mass scale. And I'd like Lake County to be a wonderful organization that works toward taking our landfill and turning it into a microfactory. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other? All right. With that, we'll close public input and move on to item six point two, pet of the week. We have our animal control department here.
Good morning, everybody.
With such serious matters, we wanted to have something super cute for you guys today.
So today, we have Buttons here. He's a husky mix. He's approximately three months old, and he weighs about fifteen pounds. We received him about four, we received him with four other of his little friends, and he is the last one to be adopted. He is friendly with people and other animals. He'll be neutered and vaccinated before his forever home. If you're interested in adopting him or any other animals, please come to four nine four nine Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. Our kennel hours are eleven to four, Monday through Friday, and Saturday is eleven to three. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Buttons, for being well behaved. All right. Thank you for that. We're going to have to take a ten-minute break. Apparently, we have a sound issue. So with that, we'll 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 close for now, or just recess for now, and we'll come back at nine thirty. Apologize for the inconvenience, but we want to make sure we have the sound. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We're just going to, first off, let me just apologize for the technical issues. I also want to check in with Zoom to see if the echo is still there.
The echo is still there.
Um, is there anyone in Zoom? Who could?
Sam, are you able to, are you able to hear us? The echo is still present in Zoom.
The echo is still present?
The echo is still present. It does not seem to be quite as disruptive as it has been at times.
Okay, I think we'll have to resume the meeting with this. Um, I've done all the updates we can do at this point. Well, I apologize for any inconvenience in the audio at this point. Chair, I think we're ready to resume. All right. So it is nine thirty-five and Sam, what was that you were saying, we're just continuing on because it's not resolved or something of the like?
The echo is still in Zoom, so we, we do have a protocol to go ahead and move forward, and that's what we will do. Um, so next on the agenda is item six point three, new and noteworthy at the library. And Christopher Veach is on Zoom. We'll give the floor to you.
Thank you so much. So I thank you for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. I am Christopher Veach, the county librarian. And this month I wanted to highlight the novel Orbital by Samantha Harvey. Samantha Harvey is an English novelist. She has written three works of fiction and one work of nonfiction. Her novel Orbital is set on an orbiting space station and follows six astronauts over twenty-four hours. It won the two thousand twenty-four Booker Prize, which is considered the most prestigious literary award for English fiction published in the UK and Ireland. NPR reported Harvey's astronauts, who hail from the US, Russia, Italy, Britain, and Japan, see sixteen sunrises and sunsets in the twenty-four hour time span of the novel. In two thousand twenty-three, Harvey told NPR that watching Earth orbits via videos from the International Space Station helped inspire the book. "I was so overwhelmed by the extraordinary beauty and strangeness of our planet," she said. Harvey wanted Orbital, more than anything, to be a book about beauty and about joy, and about the rapture of looking at something so beautiful that also happens to be our home. Orbital is available in print, large type, audiobook, and ebook through the library system. You can request this book or other materials through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake, Sonoma, and Mendocino County library systems. Requesting items is completely free, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. I'm also excited to announce that the winter reading challenge starts this Thursday, January sixteenth. During the winter reading challenge, you can sign up at the library's website or at any library location to challenge yourself to read more this winter. All ages can sign up with the goal of reading one thousand pages or twenty books, whichever comes first. When you finish the challenge, you get to be the first to choose and check out a brand-new library book and sign your name inside. Funding for these books is provided by the Friends of the Lake County Library. To make it more fun for kids, we give you a game card where you can earn stickers and small prizes along the way. For adults, you earn virtual tickets to a raffle for a gift basket filled with brand-new books. The challenge starts this Thursday until the beginning of spring and March, and you can sign up anytime, online or at any library branch. So you can find information about this and more on our website at library.lakcounticca.gov or come visit your local library, branch in Lakeport, Clearlake, Middletown, Upperlake, or on the bookmobile. Thanks again for listening to What's New and Noteworthy at the Library.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, is there anyone from the board that would like to say anything? Awesome. Anyone from the public? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Thank you again, Christopher.
Thank you, Christopher.
All right. We'll now move on to the next item, six point four, consideration of an agreement between the County of Lake and Paragon Government Relations to, or for professional federal legislative and regulatory advocacy services in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. CEO Parker?
Matthew Rothstein will be introducing this item.
Good morning, supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. As members of your board will be aware, the County Administrative Office issued request for proposals twenty-four thirty-four, seeking professional federal legislative and regulatory advocacy services. Nine proposals were received in response. A consultant selection panel was convened with leadership staff from four county departments and the cities of Lakeport and Clearlake to review all proposals, and follow-up interviews were conducted with the five top-ranked respondents. Following this rigorous and competitive procurement process, Paragon Government Relations emerged as top-ranked. The agreement before your board today provides for a seven thousand dollar initial monthly retainer, as well as travel and other direct expenses in the event one or more Paragon staff must fly to California solely on County of Lake business, for example. You may be aware, Paragon currently represents the California State Association of Counties, and they also have experience contributing to the development of federal advocacy programs for multiple California counties, including Humboldt and Nevada counties. Our panel found that this combination of experiences well-positioned Paragon to support the County of Lake at this time. Staff recommends your board approve this agreement with Paragon Government Relations in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, contingent on the protest period elapsing without a valid protest. As noted in the memo to your board, taking this action today could allow Paragon to be under contract and able to contribute to your board's governance workshop, which will be Tuesday, January twenty-eight. Six of the eight firms that were not recommended for award have directly responded to our notices of intent to award, and none signaled they would submit a protest. We do not anticipate receiving a protest as of this time. And also Joe Cron and Hassan Sarso of Paragon are available in Zoom to answer any questions your board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Would you, they're just waiting for questions, right? Okay. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll just make some comments. Obviously, they're very engaged with CSAC, so I've seen them in action, and I have no uh, issues or questions regarding their expertise and capabilities. I do have a question. Um, I was not aware, and until you mentioned Humboldt, and there are certain things currently and potentially in the future where there might be some conflict. Uh, how does that work in the sense that we want to continue to have a federal lobbying, uh, support? When there's conflicts between clients, how, how do they work those issues out so we can continue to do the work that we're planning to do at the federal level?
Yes. So I would say, um, first and foremost, that Humboldt County is handling their own federal advocacy internally. We asked Paragon about this, and so any issue, there should not be any issue with Paragon assisting with scheduling meetings, for example. And county staff would likely tend to, um, be representing the county, um, internally as well. That's similar to the practice, what the practice has been with Humboldt County. Uh, but, uh, Joe and Hassan are also here, and they can speak to, generally speaking, how conflicts would be handled.
Thank, thank you for that, Matthew, and, and good morning, everyone, and appreciate the opportunity to be on with you, uh, this morning. Uh, yeah, Matthew, I think as, as described, uh, you know, that's certainly an area that, um, we're sensitive to. Um, you know, no one wants to have to go through a conflict of interest situation, you know. Luckily, you know, fortuitously, we haven't had many or really any of those situations. Um, again, the situation with Humboldt and Potter Valley, there, there may be, uh, potentially, as you said, given a couple of issues, there, there could be a potential, uh, for, for a conflict. Again, we will address that head-on. If that's the case, certainly, if we're aware of it, we're going to be bringing it to your board and bringing it to Humboldt. Um, you know, that's Potter Valley, something that we've certainly monitored, uh, for them, but uh, as we discussed with, with Matthew and, and your interview team as, as well on this issue, you know, it's a very parochial one, in which, you know, I think your members of Congress are going to be looking at that region, regionally and locally. Um, so we're aware of it, and, and we'll address it. Um, as Matthew said, I think some of that work can be done in-house. Outside of that, we certainly don't see any, any conflicts, but again, we'll be the first to, to raise that if we're aware of anything that comes up.
Appreciate the response. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director? Yes, I just wanted to quickly comment that I appreciate all the work that's put into this. I think this is essential for us and moving forward in the future, and I appreciate that, uh, the city's collaborated with the county on this election. Thank you.
All right, uh, go ahead and open it up for the public. If there's anyone that would like to make a comment about this item, then, uh, please come up. Is there anyone in Zoom? All right. Benjamin, if you can unmute, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi again, uh, my name is Ben Piddle. I've been following these online, and recently, last year, the board was going to take twenty million dollars and, uh, borrow it for the county and roofing projects and other things for the jail. Instead of that, Joe and Hassan, I am much more interested in doing renewable projects.
Benjamin, this, that doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about right now?
I finished what I'm saying, and then it will, I write back in, and can I retain my three minutes?
Uh, you, it's not on this, you've already had your public input?
This is for a separate thing. This is, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, these guys are aligning with our federal, uh, advocacy for laws.
So do you, do you have any?
Am I correct?
You have any input about the item on the agenda about the contract, is what I'm asking, because if it's?
Yes. In the contract, I would like to see, because I see that they've worked with many other counties, many places in California, that's wonderful, but some real objectives that they're going to hit with a timeline. And do they have that? And if not, I would like to include that in their contract, please, or have you guys look over, something like that, so we get real deliverables rather than running the counter.
When we have the governance meeting, then, uh, that'd be a more beneficial time for you to make this statement when they come forward, like, uh, Mr. Rothstein has said. Thank you. Are there any other? Okay. We'll bring it back to the board for action.
If I may, Chair? And I was actually going to ask this when we brought it back to the board, and I understand the reason for the question. Uh, this is simply just a contract, but we will have, uh, like we do with our state lobbyists, we have a full list of priorities. Uh, this is not something that is negotiated by staff. This is something that's going to be, uh, deliberated by the entire board to decide what our priorities are, uh, and that will be done, I think, on our January twenty-eighth meeting. Is that correct?
Right, that's, yeah.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to provide a little bit more detail, because I, I, I did feel that that part was missing and wait a little too long to speak to it, because somebody asked a question.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Paragon Government Relations for professional federal legislative and regulatory advocacy, advocacy services in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and authorize the chair to sign. I had a feeling that was missing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for that. All right. Next on the agenda, we have six point five, and it is our nine fifteen. Consideration of Appeal, AB twenty-four dash zero-two. Of Planning Commission's Approval of Major Use Permit, UP twenty dash ninety-six, Highland Farms, LP Autumn Karsee as applicant, and Tom La, Laichik, Margot Cambera and Associates as appellant. Location, seven four oh eight, seven five two two, seven five two seven seven six three four, and seven seven four six Highland Springs Road, and seven two five seven, and seven three five seven Amber Ridge Road in Lakeport, California, APNs zero zero seven dash zero zero six, dash two seven three four three five four zero four one, and zero zero seven dash zero five seven dash zero one zero two. Looks like we have community development here. I'll give it to Director Turner to start things off.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Director of Community Development. You have before you today an appeal, um, but I wanted to bring to the board's attention a receipt yesterday of a letter of request for withdrawal from the applicant of the major use permit that is part of this appeal. Um, it is, so the applicant is requesting to withdraw the entire project, the use permit.
If I may.
She requests, oh, and I defer to Lloyd.
Go ahead.
Uh, just as a procedural matter, your board may want to swear, swear in witnesses before the.
Thank you. I should know that. Johanna?
Um, if you're on Zoom, will you raise your hand if you're, um, going to speak to this? I saw one person. All right, if not, everybody else with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, and I have two people in Zoom, Sarah Ryan and Monica, so, oh, and James Anderson. So we're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Lloyd, thank you for catching that.
Still Maria Turner, Director of Community Development. Uh, we did receive a letter from the applicant or the owner of the use permit, major use permit, UP twenty dash ninety-six, requesting withdrawal of this use permit. Um, she's also requested the opportunity to present to the board, um, that request.
Anything else?
We are prepared to present on this appeal should the board decide it, it wants to move forward.
So with that, Lloyd, would, if we accept the withdrawal, we would have to discuss it here, or should we allow the, um, applicant to come up and explain? Would that be ideal first?
Yes, uh, so your board may want to take up the item of the withdrawal request first. Following those procedures, um, what may want to take into consideration what the applicant, uh, is proposing to present in relation to the withdrawal request, along with any other, uh, testimony.
...
Saving face for anybody involved.
If I might just, the commentary, the items I would present are speak directly to the project, to the environmental considerations given to the project, to the environmental review, et cetera, things of that nature. In terms of the allegations of trespassing and whatnot, we vehemently deny those and those are being handled in another format.
Okay, thank you. So with respect to what's been presented and what's been given to us, would we like to go forward with allowing them to present? Or do we want to accept the withdrawal? Is that where that's where we're at, right?
Yeah, so currently, your board certainly has discretion to open it, open the discussion beyond the subitem of the proposed request for withdrawal. Your board may want to confirm with the appellant because what's before your board today is an appeal coming out of the planning commission's decision. But in light of the request to withdraw the application, your board may want to confirm with the appellant and appellate's counsel if they are still, at this point, willing to proceed with the appeal on the merits or whether or not, or whether they're willing to withdraw the appeal in light of the withdrawal of the application.
I think we'd be willing to withdraw the appeal, obviously, in light of withdrawal of the application, the appeal becomes a little bit moot. We'd need to see documentation of that withdrawal before we withdrew our appeal. With that being said, we would still like to speak to some of the merits of the appeal because we're here today and the community showed up and it's important to them.
All right.
Just a question, so if the withdraw without prejudice is accepted, that would essentially end everything going on with the project, but they would be, they'd still be open to reapplying at a time later in the future? Is, am I understanding that right?
If the use permit is withdrawn, the applicant is free to reapply in the future. Yes.
And it would would restart the entire process?
That's correct.
Okay.
It would be a new use permit application.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska.
So we did receive this letter last night. So that is documentation that we've received the notice to withdraw. So I, I would just hope that you would accept this and we could just move on.
Well, we'll accept, we'll accept it.
Okay.
You've received it, absolutely. We haven't received it, but we'll accept that it's been received, yes.
It's been received and we're here today, so.
Correct.
Supervisor Sabate.
Yeah, I'm definitely not looking to deliberate and force somebody to do a project they don't want to do. That's not what we should be doing. So I think we could save everybody time and heartache and just accept this. And whether we go through an appeal or not, just for historical purposes, that whether it's a withdrawal or a denial of a project, they're still allowed to resubmit for any kind of project or any alteration of a project. So no matter what direction it goes, it doesn't change what their rights are in continuing to pursue further projects. But today, I think, we have a withdrawal and it would be weird to deliberate on somebody that doesn't want to do this project any longer, so.
Vice Chair, I seen you.
I was going to make a similar comment, but I was, I'm in agreement that, you know, if we, if we have a withdrawal request, you know, we're not gonna, you know, anybody can withdraw a project whenever they want. And if the appellant's are in agreement, accepting that, I don't see a reason to go further today with moving past that.
Supervisor Owen.
Yeah, I have the question. Will the, the prior track record follow them forward if they reapply? Would, would you come back? Because I know that there's, if you're an attorney, there's financial fees that you're being paid right now to come forward and everybody's here. So is this something we should be privy to if it's going to come forward again?
If this project is, if they reapply, it will be a different project. However, the record from the prior application would be, and all of the documentation from the prior application and the prior approval would be included as part of that administrative record under SEQA law. The fact that this project can be resubmitted in the future in almost the exact same way is one of the reasons why we'd like to present some of our material today.
Director Turner, did you have anything to add to the question that Supervisor Owen had made?
For us, it will start as a new project. We are, we will operate in full compliance of any requirements for SEQA. But for us, it starts as a new project and takes the pathway of all other cannabis projects from the beginning.
Thank you.
And does the history follow?
I think without prejudice.
Without prejudice, there, prejudice or without prejudice dictates sort of the time length of a waiting period before reapplication. So I would, we'll, we'll review SEQA law to make sure that anything that is required to follow that new application does so.
Okay, did you have anything to add, Lloyd, or, okay?
If I might, I guess.
Did anyone else have anything from?
No, I'm, I'm one that wouldn't mind hearing. I, I think that we would also like, in addition to withdrawal, which we accept, I think it would be germane to grant the appeal. I think appellate's would appreciate, now that the project is being withdrawn, a granting of the appeal. And if that means that the board needs to hear the presentation in order to grant the appeal, again, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Lloyd?
Yeah, so the granting of the appeal, the issue of the granting of the appeal certainly hinges on whether or not appellate, the appellate's are requesting the withdrawal of their appeal. So if there's confirmation of that, then there is no, then the withdrawal of the appeal would occur and procedurally, there would be no appeal to grant. So that would be, your board may ask for confirmation of that towards the appellate because if the appellant is willing to withdraw the appeal, their appeal in light of the applicant's withdrawal of their application, then it would, the decision by your board, your board could, by motion, just accept the withdrawal of the appeal.
Okay. Supervisor Sabate.
I, I guess I'm slightly confused. We have a choice to accept the withdrawal or not. If they've already withdrawn, which I think they have every right to do without our approval or not, then it feels like the appeal, there's nothing left to appeal because there's no longer a project being presented. So I'm, I'm kind of confused as to, to me, it's over. Like, if there's no project, there's no appeal, there's nothing to continue on at all at this point. But it feels like you're telling us that there's a choice that we can make.
Well, there's two, two types of withdrawal that's presented to your, potential types of withdrawal presented to your board. The, and, and in part, it hinges on whether or not, again, the appellant is willing to withdraw their appeal. If it's, if the appellant is not willing to withdraw their, their appeal and wants to provide a presentation on the merits in spite of the request by the applicant to withdraw their application, then what's before your board, there is still, there would still be a pending appeal before your board, which needs, in which the appeal is on the planning commission's decision on this application that has been withdrawn. The, the appeal in a lot of ways, if it's not, if the appeal is not withdrawn, the, it would still be pending and however it is, it would be moot. It would, it would be moot in light of the withdrawal of the application. So one possible option for your board in that scenario would be to overturn the planning commission's decision because that's, there would still be in that scenario, a pending appeal before your board. And the decision on the planning commission's determination would still need to be made by your board because there would still be a pending active appeal. It's all very procedural, however, if the appeal itself is withdrawn, then there is no appeal before your board. And your board may just move to accept the withdrawal of that appeal and at the same time overturn the planning commission's decision on the application because the application's been withdrawn.
It's a little muddy, but yes.
So with that, it looks like you, you've stated that you would accept the withdrawal, but then now you've come back and stated that.
We accept the withdrawal, obviously, we can't not accept the withdrawal. What we would like is to have the appeal granted and the planning commission's decision overturned as a matter of procedure and for the record. My clients have worked incredibly hard and spent a lot of time on this appeal and we would like to have it formally overturned. We'd like to have that approval formally overturned if the board is willing to do so today. Given the changed nature of things.
All right, so I'll ask the board what, what direction we would like to go here. And I know that Supervisor Owen, you had stated you would like to hear.
Well, I just felt that, that they had spent the money and that they had taken the time to come here and since they were wanting to briefly kind of put out some, I didn't mind hearing it, but I, at the same time, I'm not sure what the proper route is. It's sounding to me by counsel that we should probably just accept it and it's done. Is that correct?
In terms of the withdrawal of the application?
Yes.
If the application is, is requested to be withdrawn, there would still be this pending appeal that has not been withdrawn. And so the, your board, as part of your board's possible decision, it would be to, with the, with this pending appeal, still decide on whether or not to overturn the planning commission's decision because there would still be a pending appeal. And the, and in light of those circumstances, one option for your board would be to overturn the, on the merits, the planning commission's decision in light of the withdrawal of the application.
And so I guess the question is, is the appellant desiring to withdraw the appeal in light of the withdrawal of the project?
No, we would like the board to make a determination today. If the board decides that it wants to overturn the planning commission's approval in light of the withdrawal of the application, we'll accept that. We would just like some action to be taken on the appeal.
Okay, so you'll, you would accept the withdrawal, but at the same time, you would, you're not going to withdraw your appeal?
Not, not at the.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing it.
No, you are, you're getting it right. It is muddy.
All right, Ms. Carcy, I see that, or Supervisor Sabate, then Ms. Carcy, I seen you stood up, so.
I just think the clearest way is the latter option that was provided to us by county council, which is to overturn what the planning commission did due to the fact that there's no longer a project because it's been withdrawn. And I think that's the cleanest, easiest. That way, we don't get our voice involved in anything in the future until we have a full situation in front of us potentially, just like the planning commission gets to go through all the details. And at this moment, without details, I don't think we should get involved in a yay or a nay on the appeal. And I think that that is the cleanest option that's been provided to us, so.
Supervisor or Vice Chair Rasmussen, and then Ms. Carcy, if you will.
Yeah, I agree, and I would really not like to have a presentation because we've been, we've been reading all these documents for many, many months. They've been submitted, we've, we've had a lot of time on this and I'd like to release staff to get back to work.
Vice Chair.
I'm in favor of hearing it and considering the overturning of the planning commission's decision.
Yes. May I speak?
Yes.
Autumn Carcy, applicant. Our attorney, James Anderson, is on the line. So if the board should choose to move to the appeal and hear the item today, I would like James to speak as well, but you can make that decision.
And so, back to the board here. So Supervisor Sabate, you've proposed to move forward with county council's statement and, and how it is. And I know that, is that what you're saying as well, or are you saying?
And correctly, what I'm saying is, the option of they've requested to withdraw the project, the applicant does not want to withdraw.
The appeal.
Their appeal. So considering that portion to consider, you know, overturning the, the project on the merits.
I see what you mean. All right, so Supervisor Owen, and then.
Actually, something that Bruno had said kind of clicked with me and, as you know, I'm a little green here, but I, I think it was more clearly stated just a moment ago with your definition that once it's gone and we would want to hear, what, what I agree with you about is, though I'd like to hear it, and unlike some of the supervisors up here, I'm new. So therefore, for me to, you know, get the information would be important before I made a decision. However, as Mr. Sabatier had mentioned, it would, we would really have to hear a lot of it for us to make that decision. So in light of that, since we don't have your side of the story, I think that probably just withdrawing it might be the better option.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And I'm ready to make a motion if county council can help me out with that motion.
Would I have to open it up for the public first and then go from there? All right, so with that, if there's not anything else from staff, and then I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment about the discussion at hand when it comes to the withdrawal, right?
Good morning, Sarah Bodnar, consultant working with the applicant. And I just want to say that we, we think this has taken up enough time for this board and so we won't be engaging in any back and forth if you decide to entertain discussion today. We'd like to close this book and move on. So thank you for your time and your thoughtfulness in this and we will be just sitting down. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good morning, I'm Peter Lucetti. I own a property at 21333 Grange Road in Middletown, California. My family has successfully farmed beef cattle there since 1970. We've been farming beef cattle in Lake County for 55 years, never missed a year of production. I've become recently very active in the cannabis dialogue in Lake County. I wrote a paper on cannabis reform in September 2024 that I hope at some future date to come and talk to you about in greater length. But as regards this matter specifically, the Highland Farm storyline and what's going on in the room today, I want to make this comment. A hundred percent of the applications that approved of cannabis in Lake County to date have been approved using mitigated negative declarations. Hundred percent have been approved that way. This appeal is about the inadequacies of the concept of a mitigated negative declaration, the idea that some applications should go to a higher level of review. This is a very important idea because it seems to me that 150-plus applications should not under this process have gone to mitigative, mitigated negative declaration. So when I think of the applicant's desire to have the appeal heard, what I really hear in my mind is the idea that this principle is very important for this board. The board needs to do this, if you don't want to do it today, then let's do it on the day when you're ready and you have the time. This principle is a very important principle for the board to consider. We can't go on in Lake County cannabis policy thinking that we can rinse and repeat by withdrawing and then going back through the process without establishing some precedent for what the folks here came to talk about today. Fair is fair. Let's get all the facts on the table. Let's get the whole process out in the open and decide how the SOP, the standard operating procedure for cannabis applications are going to work in Lake County because 100% negative declarations is a false process. It's an erroneous process, and I'll end with this. Consider this as you think about time, resources, the importance of quality of life, environment, and money and time and budget in Lake County. 575 acres have been approved with 150-plus negative declarations. Today, approximately, and we don't have perfect data because the annual audits aren't done correctly, 86.3% are not being utilized, 83.6% of the acreage is not being farmed. But we're paying for, through the mitigative, negative declarations, the annual review process and the, and the code enforcement process of county staff to maintain all of that. Instead of pushing it to a higher level of review through the SEQA process and having these applications more rigorously reviewed and more rigorously vetted from the beginning, that's what's at stake in this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that would like to come up? Yes, and then.
Good morning, board and staff and council and everyone else out there. My name is Maria Khan. I am a 25-year resident of Lake County. I'm also an East Region Town Hall Municipal Advisory Council member. And I would like to hear the information that the appellant has put together because I think it is, one, only fair, but two, also important to understand what could happen again if they just get sent back around to be able to restart their process and project. A lot of time and energy has been put in by the appellant's, their, their lawyers, and also members of the community who have come forth and. who have come forth and taken their time out of their days to be here. And in my case, losing revenue from my job because I am self-employed. There's a lot that we try to go over with these projects and bring to your attention that sometimes is just set aside and then not given the time that it deserves. And so, I for one, and I know other people out there, would like to hear these things that are a problem and should be addressed and the concerns that the community has on these projects. So I urge you to please listen. Even though they've withdrawn their project, the whole situation, sorry, remains on the next project. And I had got engaged with the community work because of a grow that was forced into my valley. And our voices were not heard. And it sent me off on a very angry foot. And I have since learned to kind of control my anger. But I'm very passionate about it. And I think that the board really does need to give time to the people that it will affect and the community at large when we bring these things to your attention. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
Good morning, Board, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen. My name is Tom Lasik. I'm the appellant and I'm also here as a citizen. One thing I would like to provide to make sure it's in the public record is this document. But as regard to the, this conversation about withdrawal of the application and the appeal, I personally would like to share with the board what our issues are and why we have worked so hard for the last eight, nine months on this issue. It's been very difficult for us. And it's been quite a bit of a challenge. And we think we have a strong argument that if they do decide to come back, won't change. Now, they don't have to say a word. And Ms. Bodnar has pointed out that they're not going to participate. They don't, and they've never had to. They don't even have to show up. It's our responsibility to be here. And I want to thank all the people from our community that have showed up to try to help us. We are here because we haven't been heard. So many times, in so many areas, we point out issues and they're either glossed over or they're ignored. And it's been a very expensive endeavor for us to just to have our brief moment of time to share with you what our concerns are and why we were concerned about this project. So I'm okay if they don't want to speak. But I would like to have our appeal heard. And granted, that's how so many other appeals have gone before this board. You hear what we have to say, you make a decision. You can hear what they have to say. You can hear what the public has to say, and then you decide. And that's how they've worked countless of times in front of this board. And we're not asking for anything different. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to. All right, thank you. And that'll be submitted as well, so. Go ahead.
Hi, Autumn Carcy, applicant. Unfortunately, this project has become cannon fodder for the appellant's hatred of cannabis in their community. I think this is not the right forum to argue their cases. They're trying to set a precedence of an EIR for all cannabis projects moving through the county, although they are not SEQA experts. I believe in the merits of this project, but we do want to withdraw the application. I don't think there's any sense in beating a dead horse here. And we can all move on. If we decide to continue with the appeal, obviously, I did not bring any materials with me today to fight the appeal because I figured we would just be withdrawing the application. There's over 1,200 pages of documentation here. So to the new supervisors, if you hadn't been read in on the merits of the case from both sides, I would suggest that we continue the appeal to a date and time certain so that you can catch up on all of the merits of this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen and supervisors. My name is Margot Cambara. I'm an appellate in this appeal. I am a Lake County resident, property owner, and registered voter. I want to set the record straight. Tom Lasik and I are appealing this major use permit, and we are not anti-cannabis. We are for sustainable and environmentally responsible agriculture. We are on good terms with our neighbors who work in the cannabis industry. We're on good terms with our neighbors who are cannabis growers, and they happen to be good actors and good neighbors. Good neighbors help each other out, look out for each other. We have helped our cannabis-growing neighbors build a house, install septic systems, install water tanks, install water lines. We all get along. We have a friend who has a minor use permit. We have been friends for years, years, friends with him and his wife. We have helped our other cannabis neighbor tow his car. We all work for the benefit of our neighborhood, and we get along. Prior to this appeal, when neighbors applied for cannabis cultivation permits, our attitude was not anti-cannabis. We reviewed the applications. We identified our concerns. We suggested solutions to our concerns. At the planning commission hearings, our concerns were addressed. The neighbor cannabis permit applicant and we reached mutual agreeable solutions. The exchange was respectful and civil to cordial. Why are we involved? Why are Tom and I involved in the permit review? Neighbors help neighbors. A neighbor to the project asked us to help review the project documents. Once we got across, got access to the documents from the county, we had a few days till the planning commission hearing. Tom and I poured over hundreds of pages of reports, memos, agency comments, and then we drafted our public statement. We noticed several significant errors in the project application. It is remarkable that in two days, Tom and I found serious errors in the project plan that escaped the notice of the applicant and CDD who had been working on the project for years. The PC approved the permit, and it looked like the project would proceed. No one expressed interest in appealing the permit. Tom and I stepped up and appealed the permit to protect our neighbors, park visitors, and Lake County's botanical jewel, Highland Springs Recreation Area. The appeal context, this appeal is bigger than the appellant's to Lake County residents. The appeal is not a case of not in my backyard. This appeal is about bad planning, bad environmental review. This appeal is about neighbor helping neighbor and neighbors working together to protect a beloved park. Lake County residents across the lake embrace this appeal. Highland Springs, Finley, Kelseyville, Lakeport, Upperlake, Nice, Lucerne, Clear Lake Oaks, The Keys, Clear Lake, Hidden Valley Lake in Middletown. Community support for this appeal is strong. Lake County residents care enough about this appeal to show up in person three times. They take time off of work, rearrange international travel, and postpone family trips. Now, of particular note is that we are heartened by the interest of Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians in the environmental issues raised in the appeal. The Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians supports protecting their cultural resources and the land for the benefit of tribal resources and all. Moreover, the Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians offers its support to the Big Valley Tribes' position on this appeal. A representative from the Big Valley Tribes' EPA office may be in attendance at this appeal hearing, and I believe Sarah Ryan is online. Among community groups supporting the appeal are Red Bud Audubon Society, Highland Springs Trails Volunteers, Lake County Horse Council, Hooves and Wheels Driving Club, and Sierra Club. This project strikes a nerve in young and not-so-young, in local residents and visitors. I have statements here from visitors who express love, admiration for Highland Springs Recreation Area and their appreciation for it, and urge us to protect that regional park. And so, that brings us to who are the supporters of the appeal? They are typical Lake County residents in that they are extraordinary. Many of them have deep roots in Lake County and can trace back Lake County roots for generations. One of the county's strengths is its people. The appeal supporters have generous hearts and they work hard. They prove their love for Lake County by volunteering many thousands of hours over the years and sometimes blood, sweat, and tears when maintaining trails in the Highland Springs Recreation Area. Their selfless volunteerism helps Lake County overcome its limited resources, improves the quality of life, and contributes to the county's economic development by increasing the attractiveness of Lake County's parks and open spaces. Some appeal supporters were invited by the county to develop Park Master Management Plan. Others served on the Mount Canuckdie Park Master Plan Committee, the Canuckdie Regional Trails Master Plan Committee, and the Lake County Tourism Advisory Committee. Several appeal supporters have served on the General Plan and Local Area Plan Advisory Committees in the past. And several serve on the current General Plan and Local Area Plan Advisory Committees. Some appeal supporters fill leadership roles in municipal advisory councils. The appeal effort impact on appellants. This appeal has been.
Can we get to, back to the withdrawal and/or the withdrawal?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You and your attorney had decided that you would not like to withdraw your appeal. So let's get back to that. I appreciate you saying those things. I wanted to allow you to say that because I know that there was a statement made earlier. But now we're getting further into the appeal, and I'm not sure if the board fully wants to do that yet, so.
Understood. Chair Crandall, thank you. Fairness. The appeal has been continued twice. We have not been allowed to present the issues, and this is important to the community. Sure, you can, you can have this, withdraw the application, but the issues will still exist. And it'll crop up maybe not in the applicant's next project, but it can be in another project. Or it can be in something that's already in the pipeline. That's why I urge you to please hear the appeal, hear the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
All right, sorry, when we're done with the comments.
Are there, and you said, Johanna, that there were some folks on Zoom that would like to speak? We'll go to them. And just for a statement that I'd like to make, I allowed Mrs. Cambura to speak a little longer because she is an appellate. Folks online, you're going to have three minutes, and we're going to have to stop at that. Okay, well, yes, and he's part of, he's part of the applicant. Okay.
Good morning, Board. This is James Anderson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Crandall and honorable supervisors. This is James Anderson on behalf of the applicant Highland Farms. I just wanted to make a quick comment, and I'll keep it brief per your comment before, that the project's been withdrawn now. There is nothing for the board to hear. According to Article 58 of the County Zoning Code, the decision of the planning commission has stayed on appeal, and the board has discretion to make certain decisions based on the appeal. But now that the project's withdrawn, there's really nothing for the board to decide. Going through an appeal at this point would be a largely symbolic exercise. And, you know, to the extent that the appellants want to be heard, they've had plenty of time and opportunities and in fact, have made, you know, dozens and hundreds of pages of public comments on the merits of this particular appeal. Now, it seems as if this appeal is turning towards a general referendum on the county's planning staff and the cannabis ordinance generally. And this is not the time or the forum for that. There's other places, better places, to be doing that. And to allow this appeal to continue would be prejudicial to the applicant who withdrew the application at this point would have to sit through a hearing where a project that's no longer even proposed, you know, let alone approved, is being attacked, and we wouldn't have the opportunity to respond accordingly. So with that in mind, I would urge the board strongly to allow the project to be withdrawn. I don't think that there's a decision to be made there. I think the project is withdrawn. And to moot the appeal and to end this hearing. If the board does decide to hear this appeal, you know, and hear public comments on it and allow the appellants to have a presentation, we would urge the board to allow a continuance to date and time certain for us to properly respond to those. Thank you.
All right, next. All right, if you can unmute?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Monica Rosenthal from Middletown. Middletown Chair of the MAF Board. And first off, good morning to Chair Crandall and to the members of the Board of Supervisors. And welcome to the new supervisors Helen Owen and Brad Rasmussen. As I read the information, I believe what is before you today is the appeal of the Highlands Farm project, not whether or not to accept the withdrawal of the project that was presented, might I add, last minute to this board and to the members of the public that are participating in this, this appeal project. And I'd also like to ask why the project manner of the Highlands Farm project has been allowed to speak numerous times and allowed to read a long, lengthy letter that was poking at individuals and at groups in the community. Again, when this, this item before you is the appeal of the Highlands Farm project. I totally agree with everything Margot, Tom, Peter, Mary, and several others have stated before you today. I do agree that, that, you know, continuing this on, you know, perhaps, you know, with the withdrawal of the project pending separate from this appeal, is, you know, time-consuming. Again, this project has consumed a lot of time, not on the fault of those that have applied for the appeal. I believe it was this board, or the board, that has, has asked to have this hearing of the appeal delayed on numerous occasions. Further, I will add that CDD has not yet read the department's recommendations, which are based on the advice of county council, which, as I recall in reading the document, indicates that there was error on the part of the PC, the planning commission's approval process that, that, that results in those findings made by our planning commission to be invalid. So I would encourage this board to either listen to the appeal, allow this appeal hearing to go forward, or to go ahead and approve the appeal if the, if those filing the appeal agree, and, and deny the project, and then go ahead and accept the, the, the project dismissal with, without prejudice. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. One second, let me see if there's anyone else online. All right, if you can unmute and let's make sure it's pertaining to item 6.5.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, I would like to just make a more general statement about the importance of legal cannabis cultivation. Legal cannabis cultivation is a vital component of Lake County's economy and community. It provides significant employment opportunities, supports local businesses, and generates substantial tax revenue.
Ma'am, can we get back to item 6.5 and the withdrawal of the appeal?
Moreover, regulated cannabis grows.
Okay, I'm going to have to stop that.
ensure that product safety and environmental sustainability.
All right, so that's, sorry, we have to stay on task here and stay on the subject. Ma'am, can you, let's, close bubble again, put after this.
Casey Shorrock, again, for appellants. The importance of the board acting on the appeal today. The importance of the board acting on the appeal today, you don't have to hear the appeal to act on it, to overturn the Planning Commission's approval and to overturn the adoption of the MND. The problem with not doing that is that MND, that negative declaration that CDD has admitted is faulty will stand and could potentially be used in the future. It's also a liability litigation risk for the county. So overall, we think that we believe and we're requesting that some action be taken today so that that approval and that adoption of the MND is overturned so that it can't be used again in the future. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Isn't that what we would be doing by overturning what the Planning Commission decided?
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you had indicated you wanted to come up. I'll give you a brief timeframe. I did close public input, but I will allow you- Okay, and then we'll let-
Hi, it's Maria Conigan. I just want to have all the facts put out on public record. I think it's important that we hear them and that they are actually in documentation, video, whatever, that, that would, they, they have been heard. Those issues have been heard and addressed. And so that the next time this comes around, there's some, some data there. Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Anderson, we'll give you one last statement and then that's, we're closing it from here forward. Okay, it looks like we're good. So we'll close public input.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Angela Ameral. I just wanted to point out that the appellants have spent a considerable amount of money and time to get to this point while the applicant's been working behind the scenes with county staff to try to find a workaround. I want to ask, maybe you can ask County Council, if the board simply overturns the Planning Commission approval and does not grant the appeal based on the information provided from the appellant, does that essentially make the appellants' work that they've done this far, does all of their work not be ineligible for consideration should this application come back up and making- should they reapply as it is with it not being on the record? So right now, if you guys listen to the, the information that they are going to provide, it will be on the record and can be used in the future. My question is if, if you don't do it and you just overturn the Planning Commission based on the withdrawal, is all that information not going to be considered the next time? Because there is a lot of information in there that needs to be looked at. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think from what I heard earlier is that it would because of SEQA, but I may be wrong and I'll let County Council reiterate.
So every hearing that's presented before your board is a, is a de novo review? Is in, under de novo review? So any and all relevant elements, your board, relevant evidence presented may be considered by your board and given its proper weight. The, the scenario of, of an application being refiled or a new application, that, that's all speculation at this point. So what's before your board today is this present application that's being requested to be withdrawn. So there are procedures in place in the zoning ordinance for your board to take into consideration once it gets to that level. And even prior to that, there's a process of any application, any new application to go through the review and approval process, both at the CDD side of things and also on the Planning Commission side of things. But for your boards, for your purposes, so your board's review, yes, any evidence that's deemed relevant by your board, pertinent, can be given its weight under a de novo review.
All right, and so lastly, I think you said, Mr. Anderson put it, I know he was going to speak and then I allowed Angela. If you can keep it brief and make your statement, sir.
Thank you, James Anderson again on behalf of applicant. I just want to correct one statement made by opposing counsel, Ms. Shorak, that, you know, that this project has been approved and that the MND has been adopted and can be used in the future. That's not the case. Article 58 of the County Zoning Code stays the decision of the Planning Commission on appeal. So this information, to the extent it can be used in the future, you know, potentially, but there is no adopted MND and there is no approved project at this time. So I just wanted to make that comment. And I do believe that by withdrawing this, again, I'll repeat myself, by withdrawing the application, it moots this appeal. And so therefore, none of the information is relevant. And I'll end on that comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public input is closed. Supervisor Sabatier then Supervisor Owen.
So I, I just want to share a little bit of frustration because I feel like there's arguments being made just for the sake of trying to fulfill an argument without everything. This board has denied projects based on specific reasons when it comes to appeals. The Planning Commission has denied projects based on certain reasons, but each project is unique and different. And so this, this jest that I'm seeing here, it doesn't work. Because we can't make a decision on how to treat all projects based on a hearing on a project that's based on an ordinance. And we're not changing our ordinance here today. We're talking about a specific project. And so we have said no to projects because of concerns for water. We have said no to projects because of concerns for the surrounding area. All those things seem to be eliminated from either your knowledge or your, your, your arguments. It's very absolute. And, and so please take a look at what has truly happened in the past. I am not going to say that what we're, what we have is perfect, but you're, you're, you're trying to make an argument for something that is not going to pass on to the next project that is being looked at because everything is unique for the parcel. Everything is unique for what the project is requesting to get accomplished. It's just not that simple. And so I, I feel like the analogy I have in my mind is if somebody is charged and goes up to the fourth floor and charges are dropped, you're not forced to continue to go through the court case and see what the final outcome of the court case is. There's no more project, there's no further charges, so we're done. And I, I just, I, I'm feeling a little level of frustration in my mind that, that a W is a W. You kind of got what you wanted, but I feel like you're trying to get a little bit more. And so I, I'm ready to move on with the motion.
Supervisor Owen.
Something that was said again, as I've stated, I'm not as experienced at this, but something that was stated a little bit ago where it could help with perhaps the, the redrawing of the cannabis rules here in Lake County. You guys had some important stuff that you might want to tell us at this moment is what I'm kind of hearing that could maybe sway or let us know what you're thinking for the, for the future of cannabis here in Lake County. Is that what I'm hearing? No, okay. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yeah, and I mean, so when we're looking at an appeal, we have to look at the merits of the case and the, and the project that is in front of us. And so when we look at the, you know, the greater ordinance and the, that's what the Cannabis Task Force is about. And that's the presentation that we're going to have later today. So we, we want to be careful to keep our conversations where they belong. And so if we, if the project has been withdrawn, we don't have a project to look at. And so I do agree with my colleague. It looks like we're trying to bring in a lot bigger issues to influence, you know, the ordinance that we have and we'll talk about that later today.
And I am ready for that motion from County Council if the board is ready for action.
And I think that just lastly, just with regard to what you had stated about the Cannabis Task Force, I know we were having that discussion later today. Maybe there's also another opportunity to talk about some of the things that were said today with regard to the, you know, mitigated negative declarations and whatnot. I know that's Cannabis, Cannabis Task Force. But at a later date, I think that would be important to have that discussion because it seems like there's quite a bit of folks that want to talk about that. I know possibly they do so at Cannabis Task Force Group. But at the same time, I know that there's been discrepancies and concerns about being able to discuss that. So I'm only stating that because I'd like to possibly at a later date, outside of also the Cannabis Task Force, possibly have a discussion if it's the will of the board at a later date. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Lloyd?
And your board may consider a motion to overturn the Planning Commission's decision on major use permit UP 20-96 due to the withdrawal of the application and direct staff to prepare findings of foul-
So moved.
Second.
So the motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And so with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda or do we need a break?
Yeah.
No?
I have to use the restroom.
Let's take a break. Five minutes, 10:55, let's come back.
Was it the LRA?
All right.
We went to on Friday?
Uh, yeah. We're gonna go ahead and bring the meeting back to order here. And we're gonna move on to our...
The Cepeda had the agenda.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda. Item 6.6, or 1030, consideration of proposed findings of fact and decision in the appeal of Amy Hewitt Navoa and Juan Navoa AB 24-04. And just, I'm gonna go ahead and step out to, I recused myself on the issue last time. And so I'm gonna hand the gavel over to the vice chair. Does he come over and sit here, or how does that work? Okay, there you go. So I'll step out, and when we're finished, I'll come back in.
It's gone. Something happened.
I believe Mr. Wintamana will be presenting this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So pursuant to your board's statement of intended decision that came out of the December 17, 2024, public hearing on this appeal, AB 24-04, part of your board's direction is to draft findings of fact reflecting that decision, intended decision. And so the staff is requesting, one, to, for a motion to approve the findings of fact and decision, authorize the chair to sign, and then the second motion would be to deny the appeal.
Thank you. Anything from the board before we open to the public?
I just want to acknowledge the receipt of the letters, and I know it's on our agenda, but just wanted to publicly acknowledge that we did receive correspondence from the applicant themselves looking to make some changes to their applications. And I would suggest that those changes should be submitted to CDD if they plan to restart their process.
Thank you for bringing that up, that we did all receive that. If there's nothing further from the board, I'll open it up for public comment. And if there's anybody in the chamber who's on Zoom or wishes to speak, then you would have three minutes. Not seeing any in the chamber? Yes?
Hi again. A lot of new people. Bruno, Jessica, I was here last time. I'm not too sure what the facts of finding, but I guess legally need a, I can be explained what they were on the decision. But I'm just here to kinda, I didn't know that the project was still going on, I didn't even know about this hearing. But I'm just a little confused on the whole situation, I'm not gonna lie about that. So, quick thing that I wanted to say is on the, last time we were here, they said we could submit, resubmit the application and use some of the original studies, scientific studies. And as you got the email saying that, I guess we have to redo some of those scientific studies again and add some. So, I wasn't too clear on that, if that's misinformation, or we just got lost in translation, as you know, because scientific studies are very expensive. And another thing I wanted to say is, I know you guys have a hard job and a hard decision, but I did go through some of the records of the last two years on the Planning Commission, and what has come up for major use permits, which I have nothing against any other cannabis, I'm gonna say that right now, nothing against that. I'm just trying to say what's going on with the community. So, there's only literally been three other projects that hasn't been cannabis. One was a mini storage in Middletown, the ag program for Scotts Valley, ours, and Morgan's wind farm, in two years. That's it for the community. Which is fine, I mean, I know it's expensive, I mean, it's hard to bring a project like this to the community, and it's enduring by far. So, being here on the facts of finding, I guess I was told I need to, I was never, I haven't got an email or received the facts of finding yet. So, I'm assuming you guys are gonna explain that to us?
So that's what's in front of the board right now, is to review and consider approving the findings of fact and decision, and the denial of the appeal, so.
Okay.
That's...
That's what's here right now.
That's what's before us to make a final determination on that.
Okay, so is there a possibility to get a continuation on the project, or something like that?
No, that, you would have to, as Supervisor Sabatier had mentioned, we did receive the public comment, and that would need to be submitted through CDD for any consideration.
Okay.
But as of right now, today, what's in front of us is to make the final decision on the appeal hearing and the board's decision from that day.
Okay, and that will either kill the project completely, and there's no continuation, because CDD has said that we have to start over.
Correct. If the board moves forward with this, then that certifies essentially the results of the appeal hearing. And you need to submit everything back through CDD for any new project or reconsideration.
Okay, and then including all the new scientific studies, redo them all again?
I, we don't have, maybe Director Turner could weigh in on that, but there may be some items that could be reused, I don't know, I'm not the expert on that.
Right.
We do have Director Turner here, if she...
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna make this complicated or anything like that, but if she wants to weigh in, that's fine, I mean, if we can reuse the same scientific studies for the same project.
We can't make a determination on that today.
And, I mean, even if we have to pay for like an appeal fee, or a resubmit fee, as long as we can use all the studies and drop the capacity down to 120 or something.
We can't make decisions on any of that today. What's in front of us is the final approval on the, this board's decision during that appeal hearing.
Okay.
So we can't, we can't get into any further discussion on that.
Okay, I just, that's fine, I just wanted to show on the record saying that we tried, and if we can show that on the record, if we can't submit and...
It is on the record, and we did receive your communication.
And I wanna show on the record saying, you know, the projects that have come up against, with the community have been very limited for the actual community, and to bring other businesses like that.
Thank you for that, that comment.
All right, thank you.
Any further public comment? And you'll have three minutes.
Hello. My name's Amy Navoa, Avranto Navoa. I just wanted to go back three years ago when we started this project, and Eric Porter was our planning, our planner. And I was coming here to meet with him, and I decided I would go downtown. And right over here, I went to, there was a brewery over here, and went to lunch there, and then I walked up the street, the next one right in front of this courthouse, there was a really cute boutique, and I went there and I bought a few little cute items, and then I walked up and there was a thrift store up here, and I bought some there. So, three years later, after all this stuff that we've been through, which is unbelievable, there's been the worst, this has been, this process has been so terrible, I hope no one else has to go through this. Three years later, when I came and paid all my $1,800 for this appeal, almost $1,700 for the appeal, because it was worth trying to fight for this, for the community, I did the same thing, I said, okay, well, I'm gonna go pay my, my appeal money, and then I'm gonna walk through the town and, and go visit these same places. All of them are gone. The community development came here, sat right here and said that our Lake County is looking for small businesses, they're looking for small businesses that help other small businesses. Well, here we were, right? They were looking for specifically venues, and we're a venue, we were here for the community. We didn't have to do this. We wanted to do this. This is what our county should be looking for, businesses that are here for the families, to have fun, to have a beautiful wedding, you know? This is what I thought that you guys would be looking for, and this is what they're saying they're looking for, but yet when, when we, we did everything they asked us to do. Eric Porter and Miraya both said that the decisions, they do listen to public opinion, but they're based on reports, they're based on scientific studies. So we did every single study that was told of us. We were told that, that, you know, basically it will pass if you've done everything we've asked us to do. That's what we did. We had the biological study, the archaeological study, we had the tribes out, we had, we had to get, they wanted our site plan done several times, we had to get an engineer, this all cost a lot of money. We're just a family, we don't have corporate backing, we can't repay these fees, and you said, okay, well, we're not gonna, it's non prejudiced, you can start over. Who, and who, does anybody here that has a family, has a $10,000 budget to repay fees that we have already paid? I mean, that doesn't make sense to me, that we would repay the fees that we've already paid, not even knowing if we would get the permit. So, I mean, even if this doesn't happen for us, we've heard, you know, we learned our lesson, this hurts, this is a very hard financial back for us, I mean, we had to use our savings, we, I took my name out of retirement, I had to get a job, that's not for you, because that's bad on me, because I assumed that this would go through, and we'd be having income for this, and we'd be able to use other, you know, give the income to other people.
I'll have to ask you to wrap it up, we have...
So, just shame that this kind of business does not go through. I know, I'm not against the cultivation either, that's great, but shame that you guys asked for this kind of business, we came up with it, and really just because our local people don't want competition, it didn't go through, and that's very sad for the community, sad for the people.
We're gonna have to wrap up the comments, but we did receive your communication.
Well, thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment in the room?
Hi, my name is Angie Carter. My husband Craig Carter and I own the Narrow family resort, which is located directly across from Juan and Amy. I just wanted to thank the board for all their work and their finding of facts. I know that Ms. Navoa had submitted a motion reducing the number of guests to 120, because that's our maximum capacity at our resort, I think that's great. But I just wanna remind them, the board, that that wasn't the only issue with the special events permit, the amplified music and the other things, that was also an issue as well. We do hope that they reapply for something, like a campground, or something that is similar to the other things that are in the area. We are more than happy to work with them in helping them find something that will fit into the area, work with them on the road issues, so that we can all work together for something smaller, and that is more conducive to what else is already in the area. And that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the room? Johanna, do we have anyone online? Nothing online, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move, or Vice Chair, I move that we approve the findings of fact and decision and authorize the chair to sign. And, separate or together?
Separate.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
We will close that item, and I will go retrieve the chair.
We have one minute anyway. Next item.
So we have one minute?
Chair, you may wanna bring them up to set up, the 1115 item. You may wish to, it'll take some time for them to set up.
Yeah, come on and set up. Okay, all right. Yep, there we go, 1115. All right, right on time. So, next item on the agenda is 6.7. Consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement 16155, Quail Trail, Clear Lake Oaks, Spring Valley, APN 062-032-030. Director Turner and Code Enforcement Manager.
Ahah. Miraya Turner, Community Development Director. This presentation will be made by our Code Enforcement Manager, Melkus Marcus Beltramo, as soon as we get our tech up and running. So I will pass the microphone to him.
Feels like you're sharing yourself. I think it made it worse. Can we call in Sam on this one?
Trying to get the presentation up.
Don't know about you, but sometimes I wish we could go back to the Big Esel poster days.
Let's take three minutes so that we can get this figured out.
If you do window tab, you should be able to get to desktop. Just alt-tab, which doesn't show you the desktop.
Might have to get out of that pop-up window.
I think you also can't get out, because you're trying to share. Like you gotta close the share. Windows tabs should give you like a cool, a cool looking change, but there's nothing to change to. If I do it. Can you pass it on over here, and I'll share my screen and get on? Okay.
All right, perfect.
It's, it's back! I'm not touching that USB stick. That thing's doing weird things.
There we go.
There it is.
Because it's like an extension USB.
We're getting there.
Up and to the right, you gotta hold it up and to the right. So you're gonna love what I'm gonna say. I guess I can't probably speak until we're back in session. Because I, I feel like I can help solve this. Everything's on. Everything's on our agenda. Do we need a presentation?
That's true, right? And then, and then possibly we can just post the pictures and everything else off. Because I know that this executive summary explains a lot of it as well. And so maybe that's how we go about this instead of ensuring delaying this anymore. Sam, we're good. But we're just gonna move forward.
How many people does it take?
Okay.
There's a joke somewhere in there.
Well, I apologize for that. I'm not sure what happened. But good morning and thank you for everybody's help. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager for the Code Enforcement Division for Lake County. We come here before the board here today to record a lien against a property in which we performed an abatement action on. The property is 16155 Quail Trail in Clear Lake Oaks, also known, an area known as Spring Valley. So I'll just kinda, kinda go through this. This will be a little different process for me. But we received numerous complaints over this property over the years. This is one of these properties that's, it's been a legacy property. I think you've heard me mention some of these properties in the past. It's been an issue since I've taken over as manager and prior to my appointment as manager. I went to several town halls, specifically the Earth Regional Town Hall, and this property was mentioned multiple times at those town halls as being a concern, being an issue that's affecting the public. The property is, currently it is a vacant lot. It doesn't have any primary structures on the property. It was involved in a fire. I'm not sure which fire it was. We couldn't really nail that down. But there were governor executive orders passed. This board also passed for compassion, kind of suspending the zoning requirements at that time so they could get temporary power and temporary living conditions. Those orders and have, have now since expired. And we believe we've given reasonable amount of time for the property owner to do what he needs to do to bring the property into compliance, submitting building plans to build a house on the property. And the meantime, the property accumulated a lot of issues. So they were storing junk vehicles, had electrical cords all over the place, storage of miscellaneous trash rubbish, a lot of stuff that cannot be on that property since there is no primary residence. So the main violation that we cited is storage on a lot in addition to inoperable vehicles, trash rubbish, and a litany of other issues occurring on that property. So we issued notices, multiple notices. We did talk to the property on multiple occasions, tried to have him come into our building division to submit plans. He never really could get past some of the hurdles as far as just even submitting the plans with the proper drawings and schematics for our building department to start the permit application process. So, and again, this was one that was affecting multiple properties, affecting the areas. One of these magnet properties as well. Storage of a lot of RVs on there, people living in RVs. I just wanted to also add that as well. So we moved forward with our processes and looked to perform an abatement. This property is also covered under the copter program. The sheriff refocused our attention back onto this property as they were receiving calls. And we felt now that we had the resources from the copter program, the staffing, we felt we were in a position to go ahead and move forward. This was a, one of the largest abatements we've done to date. So we moved forward with that process and we hired a contractor to go, go ahead and do the abatement. We issued all the proper notices, went through all the due proper, due process procedures. We did obtain a warrant to go, an inspection and abatement warrant to go on to the property to conduct the abatement. The property owner was aware of all our violations, our notices, our attempts to get, bring him into compliance. And at the end, he basically just kind of said, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do. So we moved forward with that abatement. The abatement, the photos were submitted as part of the packet, the memo packet and are made available to the public. So you can see from the photos, there's a lot going on over there. There, the whole property from premise, property line to property line was technically in violation in one form or another. Just to kind of give you the stats of the abatement, we removed 44,180 pounds of trash and debris, 30 tires and rim, 30 tires with rims, 15 tires without rims. Two fifth-wheel recreational vehicles were demolished, two and a half bumper pull trailers were demolished, four loads of scrap metal, two classy motor homes were demolished, six vehicles were towed off the property and one recreational vehicle was towed. We also dealt with issues of scattering where basically they take issues from the property and they kind of move them all around the Spring Valley area. The recreational vehicle did come from this property. They moved it back to the property and then we handled it from there. So we had to use multiple contractors to accomplish this. It took about three to four days for the abatement. Our Code Enforcement Supervisor Joey Valdez or Norman Valdez conducted the abatement and was the lead Code Enforcement Officer on this. So if you need any testimony about what actually occurred in real time or on the ground, Joey's here to testify as a witness to those issues. The cost of the abatement. I'm sorry, do we need to do a swearing in?
A swearing in? I don't think we do. Do we have to conduct a swearing in? I don't think we do, but I just wanted to.
Yes, we do. And so after the swearing in, I apologize for that, for not catching that. After the swearing in, if, if Manager Beltramo can just re, basically reiterate what he said before would apply after the swearing in.
All right. If you're in Zoom and you want to speak on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom. I'm not seeing any in Zoom, so do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, thank you for catching that.
In summation, we're here to record a lien against the property 16155 Quail Trail. We did issue multiple notices. The notices cited violations, several violations of the Lake County Code. We did perform the abatement. And basically, I'll go through with the cost of the abatement now. The contractor abatement cost $22,855. The contractor cost for towing, we used Jones Towing, was amounted to $1,450. And Kelseyville Savage, which is another tow contractor, amounted to $1,600. And then we calculated the administration fees and the amount of $3,372.20 for a total abatement cost of $29,277.20. That is the amount that we're asking the board to approve. If approved, we will record a lien on the property and then we will forward that information to the auditor's office to be recorded as a special assessment on the property tax rolls. Outside of that, you have the pictures. They were submitted so you could see the photos of what was occurring on the property and the extent and the scope of what was occurring. There was a lot. And again, it affected a lot of properties. We had multiple property owners coming up from, up to us time to time, asking when we were gonna get to this property, when we were gonna address this property. And also they were going into things that would be considered social nuisances. Obviously, we don't cite or violations for social nuisances, but the social nuisances that were occurring at the property as well and affecting their enjoyment and comfortability in their property in addition to the public nuisances. That being said, I'll end my presentation and I'm open to the board for any questions or concerns or any additional information that you may seek.
Thank you for that. And yes, I seen it and it was pretty bad. Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm fumbling through the county code right now. I know that for urgency, emergency abatements, there's a requirement that within the next meeting or something like that, that you let us know that you use your emergency powers to be able to take care of an issue. But I'm not certain where I see in our code that we have to go through. Love seeing Mr. Valdez, love seeing you, Mr. Beltramo, but I would prefer you be out in the field rather than taking the time to put all of these agenda items together, talking to us about what you just did and us, basically what we always do, which is agree, it looks like a mess, it looks like we needed to take care of it. Is there a specific code in our municipal code that forces you to come in front of this board to get it approved because of the fact that you're assessing a property? And is there an easier way to do this, maybe on a quarterly basis? Here are all the assessments that we would like to get accomplished. I'm just, I, I, I love this. I see that you're doing the job that we're asking you to do, but at the same time, I can't help but feel there's a certain level of what I feel is wasted time versus you being out in the field doing the work that we're actually asking you to do.
Thank you. There are a number of abatements that you never see. However, in our code, it does allow for the property owner to request a hearing on an abatement that has taken place.
So this is an appeal hearing? I didn't catch that in the memo.
So the code. To kind of address your question, you had multiple parts to your question there. The first part, yes, the code compels us to come in front of the board. Two, there is a due process component to that where the property owner can object or question the amount that was of, of the contract or the amount we're gonna record against the property. Also, it's also part of the due process to come in front of a board and you are checking the system to make sure that we carried out our job according to the code or if you have any additional concerns. So I'm not sure if there is a way around this. Again, it does take up substantial time if we have a code officer who has to spend half his day waiting to do these presentations when he could be out in the field working on those things. I believe this is probably something more suited for county council to probably review and probably provide their counsel on. But there are reasons for these hearings, the due process part of it being the big one, having opportunity to be heard from the property owner.
Because I, I, again, I'm reviewing the memo. I see everything up to October 10th, 2024, but I don't see a, where there's a date for the request by the property owner to be heard.
Though the code actually at one, if you look in section 1342 and it's in the memo there, the board supervisor shall hear and consider an counter proposed assessment. I believe that's this section that we would rely on.
County Council, Quintavano?
Yeah, that, that is correct. Section 13-42 applies to post-abatement lien hearings such as this one. It applies in situations even in, even in situations where notices to abate have been posted, have been served pursuant to the procedures laid out in Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code. And if the, if the property owner, for instance, does not respond or does not submit a request for an appeal, at the point where post-abatement lien procedures would apply such as this one in 13-42, a hearing would still need to take place.
I, I would love to look at ways to make this more streamlined. Like I said, if we, I, I know for our assessor's office, we have set very specific quarterly dates for when we hear assessment hearings. I think doing something like that for you might be helpful. I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm just looking for, I, I just, I, I see this as a formality more than anything. I get it if it's in our code. Not sure if we're able to change our code or if it has to because of due process. But if there's any way we can make this easier, and I'm already making it harder by having the conversation last longer than it should, but I'll just shut up now.
No, I, I really do appreciate it and I, you know, these are the kinds of things where we need to expand these things to be more effective and more efficient. But my one concern would be by doing it quarterly is that a lot of the properties we've been dealing with lately, they've been put up for sale. And if we don't get that lien on there, we're not protecting our investment in the public money by doing that in a timely manner. And that would be my one concern. If we did it on a quarterly basis, these properties would sell. There would be no lien. escrow wouldn't catch it and we wouldn't get our money back.
What about monthly?
We'd be happy to take a look to see how we can make this more efficient, both for staff time and board time. Sorry, I was mistaken. I thought a previous director had actually changed the code so that these were only coming before you when requested by the property owner. But we'll, we'll go back and do an internal review and we'd be happy, should the board choose to come back with options for changes in the future.
Thank you, Director Turner. Anything else? So with that, did we want to, okay. Anyone from the public would wish to speak? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board and I.
I'll make a motion.
So I have a.
There's nothing further from the.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Well, yeah, wait one second. We do have to, yeah. Go ahead, Lloyd.
The board, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve a lien in the amount of $29,277.20 and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office. After recordation, shall be delivered to the county auditor who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment roll as special assessments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have, we had all five ayes, right? Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. All right, sorry. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much, Director Turner and Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo. With that, it looks like our next item that's timed isn't in.
Thank you.
1:30? Yeah, 1:30. We will go on and start with 7.2. Consideration of approval of agreement between County of Lake, Lake County Behavioral Health Services as lead agency for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Lake County Office of Education for fiscal year 2024 through 27 in the amount of $125,000. And we have Behavioral Health Director Jones here.
Greetings, Mr. Chair, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the great work that the Lake County Continuum of Care has been doing. The continuum issued a request for proposals for the services contained in this contract and Lake County Office of Education was a successful respondent. The county has had a longstanding relationship with the Lake County Office of Education, at least for behavioral health, for the provision of many different kinds of services. And so we're happy to continue to expand in supporting the needs of the entire and whole child. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just a brief question. I believe this was a overall $250,000 and we split it. This is one of the contracts from that split, if I'm correct, for the TAE?
I believe that's correct.
And just, I don't know why I didn't think of this when I looked at it. Is there, should we require a signature from the continuum of care on these documents? Because there's only the Lake County Office of Education and County of Lake wondering if we need to update that. I'm not sure if the money is COC's money or if it's the county's money though.
I may defer to administration or county council on that matter, if I could. I believe the question was about.
Whether the COC itself should be signing, since they did approve, we went through a process. We approved for both contracts at $125,000, so this is all correct. Just wondering if there should be a signature section for the COC, especially if it's using the COC's money. If it's the county's money, I don't think we should be signing.
Except the Behavioral Health is the administrator of COC, right?
The MOU indicates that the Behavioral Health acts as, yes, ministerially to conduct the business of the COC. It is true that the COC approves contracts that go before the board. The executive committee does approve it and those go on the minutes.
Okay.
Lloyd?
So, yeah, it does state in the first recital that the Behavioral Health is the lead agency for the Continuum of Care. So on the issue of whether or not a separate signature field should be dedicated for the COC, that is certainly an option for your board. The other option is to have Behavioral Health also sign that as long as it clearly is defined or designated as the, that Behavioral Health, the signatory would be acting on behalf of the COC as the lead agency representative.
If it's unnecessary, I think it's unnecessary. I just was, it, it's just something that popped in front of me, so. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right, it's all opened up for the public. No hands in Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Lake, which is Lake County Behavioral Health as lead agency for Lake County Continuum of Care and Lake County Office of Education for fiscal year 2427 in the amount of $125,000.
Second.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Director Jones. All right. We will continue on with, let's see.
7.4?
Yes. I'm just trying to find it and read it, so there we go. 7.4. Consideration of the following advisory, board appointments, Big Valley Advisory, Cobb. Wait, Big Visery. wait, Big Visery, Big Valley Advisory Council, Cobb Municipal Advisory Council, first five, Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, Lake County Resource Conservation District, Law Library Advisory Board, and, wait, why is that? Yeah, it's kind of mixed, but that's, yeah, Law Library Advisory Board. So there we go.
And Library Advisory Board.
And Library Advisory Board. It's all kind of meshed in. So, all right, with that, I know that we have an amount. Let me get this page so we can look at, we'll start with first. And Supervisor Owen, you had indicated last time you wanted to look through them.
Yes, yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. And so I know we'll start with the top, Big Valley Advisory Council. There's three vacancies and we have Rick White, incumbent alternate.
Yep. I move that we approve Rick White to the Big Valley Advisory Committee, but not as an alternate. We don't have enough members.
Okay, so-
We need an alternate yet.
And you are saying public comment?
Yeah, if it's just a nomination, then public comment can follow.
Okay. After each one?
After each group or council.
Okay, so with that, first we'll open it up for this public comment and this item for Big Valley Advisory Council. Not seeing or hearing any? I'll take, you didn't have one? Okay. I'll take the motion from Supervisor Pisca.
And I'll second that.
And a second from Vice Chair Rasmussen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, Cobb Municipal Advisory Council. We have three vacancies, two member at large and one alternate. We have Paul Duncan for an alternate, Christopher Nettles, member at large, and Donald Strickler, incumbent member at large, and Christopher Nettles is also incumbent. And so I'll open it up for public input. All right, not hearing or seeing any? I'll bring it back to the board.
To the Colberry Council, I nominate Paul Duncan as the alternate, Christopher Nettles, Donald Strickler as members.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the first five, Lake County, two vacancies, two member at large. We have one applicant, Carolyn Rosen, new applicant, and she's applying for the member at large position. And I will open it up to the public. If there's any comments or questions about this? Hearing or seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and if there's any comments about this from the board or if there's just action.
No, I think there's just action.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we all nominate Carolyn Rosson as a, as a member at large for the first five commissioned Lake County.
Second.
Nope. I have a motion from Vice Chair Rasmussen and a second from Supervisor Sabatier. He beat you by like a millisecond. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, five vacancies, one representative from District One and Three, and one Education and one Recreation Industry. And so we have Angela De Palma Dow for the education portion, Justin Ratcliffe, incumbent District Three, and Julia Carrera, District Three. I will open it up to the public for any comments. Not hearing or seeing any? I'll bring it back to the board. And I know I have two applicants for District Three and I support the incumbent, Justin Ratcliffe.
I'll make the motion for you then. Mr. Chair-
I have a question regarding the applicants. Angela De Palma Dow is a member of the Lake County team, placing a employee of Lake County on the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Board. I just, I, it's not something we do often. Her expertise is not what's in question here. It's more of, are we looking for public members or are we looking for staff members? Because that's a very different scenario. And I guess I will say trepidatious, hesitantly, should we check in with our department head whether or not we're going to appoint somebody who might take time away from their work to be able to fulfill their need? Like, I just, there's certain things that I'm kind of unaware of us doing in the past and a little nervous about setting that precedent.
She's been serving-
And we have Carolyn.
In this role, yeah.
Yes, Carolyn Purdy, Administration Office. Angela did serve under the Fish and Wildlife Conservation seat last year. And since it's been filled already, she is applying under the education seat for this year.
Well, my hesitation still stands.
Okay.
I think that we know how when we typically have committee meetings, we invite staff when we want the expertise to be there. And so I guess until further notice, it would be nice to get someone else that could be able to be a public member for the education purposes or from another agency. Because I think staff is always available, depending on the topic at hand, to be invited to be a part of the discussion.
Well, I actually had the same question. I'm not, I have no opposition to having a staff member on there, but I did have that, that came to mind as to how that works, the staff member on there. I wasn't, I was just wondering the same thing. Do we have other staff members on other committees, serving as an appointed member rather than just being a county employee, basically supporting that committee?
Lloyd?
So the committee's policy of the, of the County of Lake under Rule Four does address to some extent this issue where it states that in order to further, to further community involvement in county government and to further the independence of advisory boards, it shall be the policy of the board of supervisors, not to appoint county employees as voting members to those advisory boards, which are intended to consist of independent citizens and/or community members. So there's two prongs to that. The first one is whether or not this particular committee is, consists of voting members, an advisory board. Second prong is whether or not this committee is intended to consist of independent citizens or, or community members. So staff can certainly look into that for further review. It's up to your board if you want to make the appointment today, subject to any potential changes later on, but that's up to your board's discretion.
Who was, who had the education seat last year? Was it Greg?
Greg Juisty.
It was Greg. And does he not want to do it again?
He didn't apply. And I will also note that these meetings are all after hours. They're in the evening. So I don't know if she's-
I'll ask Greg again.
Okay, thank you.
So we want to hold back on that?
Well, it'd be my position to hold back as well, based on the information we got from county council. Do I see the analysis of the bylaws and whatnot before we do that?
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I know I'm repeating myself, but please do not take this as anything negative. I think the work that you do, Mr. Palma Dow, is amazing. It's more of a, the correct fit for the right purpose for the type of committees that we try to create. So I hope that, I just wanted to reiterate that because I don't want it to be seen as a negative.
And that's where I'm at, too. It's, it's just the, the policy and the practice of staff that I was looking at. But she's certainly qualified, more than qualified.
All right, so we'll hold back on-
Hold that one and I'll move to appoint Justin Radcliffe, Fish and Wildlife Committee, District Three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Lake County Resource Conservation District, two vacancies, one representative from supervisorial District One and one member at large, new applicant Charles Barron, District One, Steve Campbell, District One, Mary Daly, District One, Kate Schmidt-Hopper, who is the incumbent in District One. The other three are new applicants.
Okay, I would move that we appoint Charles Barron to the Resource Conservation, District One, redacted. And do I do two? Can I do two? Because I think that we're both District One-
Yes.
That were on the agenda last time. So that's why we held off.
Well, there's one and a member at large, I think, so.
And I'd like to appoint Steve Campbell, Resource Conservation.
And so we'll open it up to the public briefly, but we will note that what you had recommended. Is there anybody from the public? All right, bring it back to the board. And I do have the motion from Supervisor Owen.
I'll second.
And I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Next is the Law Library Board, one annual vacancy, Dennis Fordham, who is an incumbent. I'll open it up for the public. And I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move to appoint Dennis Fordham to Law Library.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Library Advisory Board, five vacancies, one representative from supervisorial districts one, two, and three. We have Kate Schmidt-Hopper, new applicant, District One, and Paula Warner, new applicant, District One.
I'd like to move to appoint Paula Warner to the Library Advisory Board for District One.
And then I'll open it up to the public briefly. And then I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll second.
And then I see that there's five vacancies. Oh, wait, no, that's for District One. Sorry, sorry. We have, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Excellent. So we are through that. That concludes the advisory board's appointment. Now we are going to move on to 7.8. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Harmony Research LLC. To increase the total compensation to the contractor to a total not to exceed $615,000, we have Treasurer Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan, here to present.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present this. So the item we're bringing forth is an amendment to the agreement with Harmony Research. That work? All right, better. All right, so good afternoon. I'm bringing forward the item for the amendment to the Harmony Research Agreement. This is for the title search and party of interest notifications for the tax sale that we do each year. And that would be primarily the Chapter Seven auction, along with some of the Chapter Eights. So due to the volume of sales that we've been doing, we did utilize almost the entire amount of money that was in the prior agreement. So essentially what I'm proposing is to double what was in there before. So we're going from 307,500 to 615,000. And just a reminder for the board, we did do an RFP. Harmony was actually the only entity that responded in that case, partially because of our volume and the time of year. Our tax sale is a heavy load. So they've performed well. We've been, we've been happy with them so far. So I would hope your board would recommend approval of this.
Vice Chair, you had your pen.
I'm sorry, that was from last time.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a brief question to give you a hard time. The 615,000, how long do you suspect that money will last for the amount of properties you're putting up on the tax sales?
So when we were doing 1,000 properties a year, that would have essentially lasted two years, maybe a little less, especially because of the Chapter Eights we're doing as well. This time, I think our sales can be more like 600 to 700 if it's like that next year. I think we would solidly get two years out of this, potentially a little coverage in year three. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, I will open it up to the public. Anyone from the board wish to speak on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Harmony Research LLC to increase the total compensation to the contractor for a total not to exceed 615,000 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Second from Supervisor Pisca, by a millisecond. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next, we will move to 7.3. Consideration of resignation of Lake County Fire Chiefs Association from the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force and request to remove the position from task force membership. We have Director Turner here to present this item.
Thank you, Director Turner, Mireia Turner, Community Development Director. The Cannabis Ordinance Task Force currently exists with eight voting members. Fire chiefs have held one of those positions for the last, like, year, two years. We all know that there are a lot of demands on our fire chief's time. Because of that, they sort of collaboratively held that position. Sometimes we'd see Paul Blues from Kelseyville, other times we'd see Chief Sapeda. They kind of tried to spread the responsibility of participating on the task force amongst all of them due to their, the demands on their time. At some of their recent discussions, they have decided that it is too big of a demand on their time to continue to participate and sent us a letter of resignation. Subsequent conversations with them to sort of kind of gather more context, they did extend a request that rather than the fire chief's position getting filled by a non-active fire personnel, that the position be removed from the overall membership of the task force. The task force, as I will describe in much greater detail later this afternoon, has accomplished much of what the board set before it. The next step after, where after the task force finishes gathering their recommendations is for internal drafting of the draft ordinance for updating cannabis policy. We are comfortable that the fire department has given us the input that we really needed from them on the topics that concern them. And also comfortable that when the draft ordinance goes through its review period, they will again be consulted and will be able to send us any comments or recommendations at that time. So staff does recommend that the board accept the resignation of the fire chiefs as well as remove the position from the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force membership.
Thank you for that. Is there any questions on this? From the board?
I have a comment, but we can open it to the public.
No, go ahead.
I just want to comment, I do appreciate that they're still willing to look at final drafts because I think their, their input is critical and it's an important type of review. But so I think it's a good compromise, however you want to put it.
All right, we'll open it up to the public for any comments on this item. Not hearing any? I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Lastly, I also just wanted to extend our great appreciation for as much participation as they were able to do during this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we amend the roster of the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force to remove Fire District's representative position.
Can I second that?
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Turner. All right, next we will move on to item 7.5. Consideration of Request for Board Direction Regarding the County of Lake Serving as Lead Applicant for the California Department of Conservation's Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Program Grant Pre-Application. And Director Turner?
Mireia Turner, Community Development Director. The item you have before you is regarding a pre-application letter preceding a formal application for the Department of Conservation Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Program. The Resource Conservation District approached our department with a strong interest in applying for this grant with the purpose of getting a feel for, or doing research for the current state of agriculture, the challenges, the weakness, as well as looking for options, innovations, different possibilities that we could come alongside at a later grant by the same funder to start offering ways to support local agriculture. RCD is not able to serve as lead applicant for this grant application. It must be a governmental jurisdictional authority. And so we had conversations both with community development staff as well as the ag department staff to see if there would be a best fit as lead applicant. The funding sources for the agricultural department could have been called into question were they to serve as lead applicant because the requirements of lead applicant are basically to serve as the finance manager for the grant. were they to serve as lead applicant because the requirements of lead applicant are basically to serve as a, the finance manager for the grant. That lead applicant would be responsible for submitting reports on a regular basis to the state as well as accounting for the funds for the grant. I am requesting Board Direction because I wanted to bring this to your attention. Because as the Board has known, our staff is very busy with a number of projects. And so I, I wanted to speak to that as well for the Board and additionally point out a number of ways that our general plan agricultural element does support this grant activity. I'll start with the general plan. There are four different policies. Looking for conservation easements, encouraging their use, which easements have been mentioned as a possible option to help sustain and, and support our local agriculture. To support programs of agricultural technical assistance. To encourage agriculture economic zones, which could end up being another possibility. And to encourage agricultural support industries and services. This grant, were, were the RCD and, and CDD to be awarded, would result in investigation and research to see if there are options here that, that could follow up to support agriculture. And so in those ways, it is in compliance with the general plan. And I just state that because in the beginning of these talks, I wasn't really sure that this was totally in our lane. However, given that it's not an option to go through the Agriculture Department and how it is in compliance with our agricultural element for the existing and current general plan, we did have further ongoing internal discussions. And staff is comfortable with operating as a lead applicant for this option, should the Board consider it worthy for pre-application. Sometimes we don't bring pre-application letters to the Board. However, there is wording in the, the NOFA that does state that the lead applicant that submits with the pre-application must serve as lead applicant, should that grant be awarded. And we have a high level of confidence that that grant will be awarded. So that's why I'm coming to you at this early stage. We'll have plenty of more information regarding the grant specifics if, if we are invited to submit an actual grant application as a result of this pre-app letter.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have Noah Cornell from the RCD, in case you have any questions.
Did you want to add anything before I opened it up to the Board, or?
Thank you for having me today. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Director Turner, for having me here to speak. I think Mariaa did an excellent job talking about the grant and what we're proposing in general terms. And I think that if anybody has any questions about the SULC program or the specifics, I'd be happy to, to do my best to answer them.
Can you give an overview of it?
I can. The SULC program is administered by the DOC and the Strategic Growth Council in California. And it is funded by the Cap and Trade Program. It has three main tracks, a planning tract, which is what we are hoping to apply for. It has a capacity building tract, and it has a acquisitions tract. And they can be used separately, or they can be used as phases for an initial application and then following rounds of funding. A lot of the times you'll see a planning document generated in the planning tract, which may lead to a capacity building round of funding for, depending on the findings of the, the planning document. A common example would be to increase capacity for land trusts in a particular county or area in order to... And then the third tract would be acquisitions, and that may be funding for conservation easements. It might be fee acquisitions. Yes. And so essentially for the planning grant, we would, as Mariaa mentioned, do what we think of as kind of a baseline study for the agricultural economy in Lake County. And that would involve mapping important farmlands in the county, identifying development pressures and change of use pressures over time, and economic analysis, and broad outreach to all of the stakeholders in the agricultural community and supporting organizations to determine needs within the community. And that would serve as, you know, a, a baseline study or a general plan for the RCD in order to ideally bring in additional resources for the ag community.
Vice Chair? Go ahead. No, yeah.
I thought she might...
Well, I, I just wanted to say that we've been really successful with Strategic Growth Council grants through the Risk Reduction Authority and with the RCD and building capacity. So I think this is a really good fit, and I think it's an appropriate time to do it. So I'm glad that you've mentioned that your staff has some time to manage the grant. It sounds like there's going to be significant community engagement. And in discussions with Director Turner and Vice Chair Rasmussen, I, I think the Big Valley Advisory Committee could be really helpful with that. It doesn't restrict conversation to happen within Big Valley, but Big Valley is one of our biggest ag areas. And and we're happy to meet with, what we already are meeting with a couple of the members this week. And so we could bring it to them and, or the Board could give them, give us direction to, to, to be a facilitator for that engagement, to take some pressure off community development and the RCD because you already are doing so much engagement right now.
Vice Chair Rasmussen, and then Supervisor Sabatier, fall in there.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Pyska. And I, my concern in reviewing all this, when I was reviewing the materials, but I feel like that question's been answered and confirmed, was the additional work for staff. I just wanted to make sure you guys were comfortable and could do that because you have a lot going on. So that was really the only question, but I feel confident that you're good with that. Otherwise, I think it's a great, something we need to support.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I, I think it's important to find a way to make this happen. Quick question. I, I have here an email between myself and our Ag Commissioner, where the la, last report we have is a 2017 Ag Economic Report. Would that be similar to the status of Ag report that's being discussed in the memo and that this grant would help us get a new updated report on? Or is that slightly different?
Part of doing research is, is always taking a look at past reports. So I'm sure that that would be incorporated into the overall review.
So it's not the same report updated to 2025? It would be?
Correct. This will be more expansive, is my impression. Additionally, if I may take the opportunity, there is no letter of support included as an attachment because that's not necessary at this time. I'm simply looking for Board authorization or approval to serve, to have community development serve as lead applicant.
And so just to continue on, I know in the memo it spoke of maybe we can use CDD, maybe we can use the Ag Department. I, I need to learn more, but I know the Ag Department can be negatively impacted by obtaining grants where all of a sudden they won't be able to get access to certain California funds that they automatically get. I need to better understand what that means and how the, what specific grants would harm our incoming funds that we're used to getting. So that was something that came to mind, and I just wanted to at least express that. But I also do worry that there is a lot on your plate. I appreciate you saying that you have room, but I also know that no matter what comes up, you want to be a part of it and you want to be involved and you want to get those things done because it matters and it's important. So please keep us posted on how this is impacting your department because we want to make sure that you, you, you don't feel like you're drowning over there. And I guess the last thing is I'm looking for ways to partner, to make sure we don't miss these opportunities in the future. And I'm not sure if and where, and I know they can't apply, but maybe if we had a better partnership and we were better prepared, where does the community foundations fit where they can help us in the administering of these types of grants? Where that's kind of what they're there for, is to help us being a fiscal agent. So I just want to put that out there, potential future partnerships for these types of things. Because again, you're not going to always be able to come to us and say you have the capacity to deal with this, but very much support this.
Thank you. And this is an example of just such a partnership. We will rely on RCD, who are doing the boots on the ground, to provide us with the data that we need for those reports in a timely manner. So we are confident that we will definitely maintain a working relationship.
I'll just add, it's through the Strategic Growth Council grants that we have been able to staff up with the RCD so that they can be our partner. It's just this isn't a, a grant that you can take the lead on.
Did you have anything? All right. So I will, did you have?
No, just as for my information, we don't need a motion. This is just consensus.
Well, yeah. I'm gonna open it up to the public first real quick. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item, seven point five? All right, not hearing or seeing any. Bring it back to the Board. Yes, I think it is, it's direction. And so I don't know if we need to motion for the direction or take an action, or if it's consensus suffices.
Consensus could suffice. Your Board could do it by motion. There is a, the, because, only because it's due in Jan, January 31st, this grant, a pre-application letter. Your Board, in light of that deadline, would just, could move to direct, to designate essentially County of Lake Community Development Department to serve as the lead applicant for this grant pre-application letter, which would state the same thing. And, yeah, that would be the motion because it is tied into the, to a grant program.
And we don't have another meeting before it's due. So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Let's see here. We have the, let's see, we have that consent agenda item. You think that will?
I thought of bundling that with the other two public services items.
Okay.
Maybe do calendars?
Yes, let's do calendars. Who would like to start?
Go for it.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Let's see. Tomorrow is a little messy for me. Start out with a short, brief meeting. I won't be able to stay at the entire meeting for the COC Shelter Update. Shelter meaning Hamilton Haven and North Lakeport. At nine thirty, I start with a LAFCO meeting, which will be abruptly interrupted. We couldn't find a date for all three chairs to meet for the Administration of Justice for CSAC, and I wanted to make sure that I was there with the other vice chairs so that we could discuss what our plan is for this year, what we're focused on, and what we're bringing to the next conference. During LAFCO meeting, we will be reviewing our Fire District Municipal Service Review, MSRs, and so those are important to be there. Later on, I have a NACO Health Policy Meeting. And while I have AVA on my calendar, I don't believe that we have an actual AVA meeting that day. Thursday, starting again, very much coming up to the pick count. And so keep having weekly meetings about the pick count that's happening on January 23rd. Have an EMCC meeting later on that morning. And then moving on to our Lake County Community Health Needs Assessment. We just met for a first time with the data reveal, and we're going to continue with the information. And don't mean to be a little gloomy, but the data's not exactly the prettiest of all data. But we, we know that, but we're, we're struggling to make the changes that we need to make, and I hope that we can see some of those changes coming up soon. Lake County COC Strategic Planning Group will meet also that afternoon, and then I'll go ahead and be at the City Council meeting in the city of Clear Lake. On Friday, a bunch of things got added on. And if it's okay with Chair Crandall, I think I'm going to try to be at the Collier Avenue.
I think from what I've seen, they, they said that all supervisors couldn't go to that one, yeah.
Yeah, no, just planning to look and applaud and be happy that things are moving forward. Couple other things as well. I have the Economic Mobility Leadership Network Leadership Advisory Council meeting. And have to do some pick count training. And then I'm also going to go to the Twin Pine Casino for that ribbon cutting or, or unveiling of what people have already been using for the past several months for the multi-use path. On Saturday, I will be attending what Vice Chair Rasmussen has put together for the Law Enforcement of the Year Awards. And on Sunday, I'll try not to get poison oak again. I will be going to the MLK Annual Celebration in the city of Clear Lake on Monday. And I'm just gonna stop right there since we don't have a meeting on Tuesday and kind of sporadic meetings throughout the rest of that week. Back on the 28th.
And go down there. I'm trying to
Okay.
merge calendars.
Supervisor Pyska?
To be honest.
Yeah, I've got LAFCO tomorrow morning and catching up with admin staff and constituents. Got a lot of that going on. And then that for Wednesday and Thursday, Thursday evening, I have Calvary Council Friday. I'm going to see my doctor. And then I'm with Treatment Mortality Task Force, which we still need to get on the agenda to make that official, the meeting standing. Coal Creek Advisory Committee, and then at the same time is the Tree Dedication, which I'll be there for. Not sure I can make the pit count training, but I will be in Middletown for the multi-use path. And then on Saturday, I will be at Calpine Visitor Center for Congressman Thompson and Assembly Member Aggar Curry's High School Leadership giving, speaking with the kids there. And then, I'm not sure if this is still happening, but there has been a National Weather Service Spotter Program that was rescheduled. But because so much, so many of our fire crews are deployed, that maybe changed or not, I'm not sure. But anyway, that's an all-day Saturday with those two events. And then yeah, I think I'll just leave it at that, too. It is a pretty busy week next week, but we'll just stop there.
Right before, I think, after, well, after, go ahead, Vice Chair, because after that, I think Supervisor Sabatier wanted to mention something else, but we'll go with your calendar.
Well, let's see, I've had my first meetings with CAO, and I've got those set up for the regular basis. If this Board meeting gets over in time, I'll go to the Lakeport Fire Board meeting tonight. It's their regular meeting. I will be at LAFCO tomorrow as well because I'm the alternate. So I do intend to go to all those so I can be up to date on what's going on and, and learn more. We have a pick count, a regular meeting this week as well. I've got my first EMCC IFT meeting this Thursday. Several other community meetings. I will be volunteering at the Peace Officer Event on Saturday, which we have over a hundred people, I believe, registered for. I forgot to mention last week that I had my first Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting after our regular supervisors' meeting. I have a preparation meeting Friday to learn more about first five before the first committee meeting next week. And then pick count training also on Friday. I do intend to, I will make it to the Tree Dedication as well. And then just a lot of preparation time on trying to get all my committees dialed in and when they meet and who to connect with. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to merge calendars here. Have them marked in a few different places. I don't have it done yet. But, see, tomorrow, I think I'm supposed to meet with Clark, I believe, tomorrow to get some information for the South Lake County area. I have, let's see, that was Saturday. Let me go back. Go back. Wednesday, I have a Middletown Luncheon Club and Hidden Valley Luncheon Club, all on the same day, so I alternate the days we're going to those. And I know there's a Lower Lake Board Meeting, School Board Meeting on Wednesday evening, Caliomi Water, and the Clear Lake City Council will be Thursday evening at the same time, so I'm not sure which one I'm going to go to yet. Officer of the Year will be on Saturday, and Sober Grad, so they'll have, Lower Lake Sober Grad will be having a fundraiser with a spaghetti feed dinner at, and it's $15, starting at 5:30, 5:30 to 8:00 PM, if anybody would like to come by and get dinner. And that's what I have down, but I haven't completely merged my calendars.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I looked up, and I looked at the TV screen and was reminded I should submit a message for PEG. There's been a couple of times that certain municipal advisory council meetings have been canceled, and PEG has not been notified of the cancellation. I just want to remind you all to please notify the videographer. He, number one in the contract, it says we need to be notified within 24 hours. If not, because he's traveling, putting all the equipment in, then we end up paying for two hours worth of work where there's nothing that really happens. And so I would prefer that we don't do that, but I definitely agree with if we're using our videographer and there's nothing there that at least compensated for the time to get everything ready. But just wanted to remind you, please submit reminders to the videographer, Thomas DeWalt, so that he's aware of any cancellations, and I know sometimes it's last second. So just wanted to let you know.
All right. I'll finish with my calendar. I have a West Region Town Hall tomorrow. Then Thursday, I'm meeting with a group in Laserna. Following that, I will be meeting with Law Library, my first meeting with them. I'll be heading out to Spring Valley for a meeting out there, and then stop at the Clear Lake Oaks Office with a meeting there. And then, let's see, Friday, I have the, let's go back, there it is, the Collier Avenue Grand Opening Ceremony at 10:00. Well, no, I don't have the pit count. It's on my calendar, but it's not something I go to. Event at 3:00 PM is the Middletown Multi-Use Path Event with Congressman Thompson, or is it Luca? Okay, Congressman, okay. There we go on that. We don't have a meeting next week, so I'll just go on to that. I know the 22nd, there's a North Shore Business Association Meeting. There's a meeting I have at the county regarding TIPo. The 24th, I'm meeting with the UC Davis Extension. And I have a CAO meeting on Monday, the 27th, and then back here on the 28th for our Governance Workshop. With that, is there anything else anybody wants to add for their calendars? And hearing or seeing none, we'll come to a halt right here and take a lunch break until 1:30. Our next item is the, sorry, let me, Informational Update on Cannabis Ordinance Task Force Recommendations, continued from December 17, 2024. So we'll see you at 1:30.